Boppers, open space. Those are. Remember, we had a hands-on exercise where we went out into the public. Folks could build an ideal community with their hands, building blocks. We had really good discussion and recording all of those wishes they had. And out of that discussion in that first fall of 2023, we put together a set of guiding principles that we've heard from several hundred people. And what's being handed out right now is a sort of complicated velocity of context here because we want to talk about it when we dig in. So hold up on that conversation. So the five guiding principles, we've been carrying this all the way through how we structure the public information. So focus on redeveloping our corridors and nodes. Nodes are essentially where corridors come together. Look for ones that are ripe to transform, and then set the table for those to change. Second, minimize sewer spam because we're worried of the need. I think another way to phrase this would be target or set a very poor. If we're going to do it for a purpose, it's expensive. The goal here is to try to grow past the within our existing network, make sure our existing network works well, make sure it's doing the job that we need it to do in the future. And then if we need to make an expansion, let's do it quickly and reduce future language policies in mind. Third, reduce some travel expenses. We'll take on a public different form. Everybody was spoken to. She was upset about sitting in the car. And everybody was saying within the last five years today. Well, first five years seemed beautiful. Um, so in a couple ways to view it. But the map tried two of those. One, let's localize our trips by adding destinations close to where people all live. Two, let's add where people can live closer to those that are making this stuff. Maybe we have more residential opportunity along or forth. Whether that's vertical mixing of residential and vertical or horizontal. Let's bring people to stuff they care about, belong next to them, and have a seat at the block through it a lot. And then the third is let's try to make more connections to the area. And maybe it's not just movement. It'd be quite a first stage, yes, and wrong. Um, that, those were the priorities we heard coming out of that 2023 year. The other thing that came out of this was to make sure that as we grow, we're not getting uh disparate in how we do it. We're not moving up one side of town if we expand to another side of town. Uh, so planning for incremental growth in all neighborhoods where it's sort of like. That was the key caveat on that principle is that we don't want to necessarily expand where we can support it or where it doesn't make good financial sense. But everybody should be kind of looking at opportunities to handle this incremental growth. Maybe it's a little bit here and maybe it's a lot over there, but let's keep it. And then the fifth, make sure that we're continuing to support our environmentally sensitive, sustainable efforts that we've had in place for a long time. Whether that's our riparian buffers or the work that we do to protect the floodplain. But let's also introduce a physically sustainable element. Let's think about what development does for us financially and make sure that we're setting ourselves up for success. So those five principles informed the creation of the growth concept map. This map came to you all through January 2024. Um, we had a little discussion on that and the guidance we received was very odd. But the notion here was that we would have a concentration of growth around those nodes, which is for the yellow, orange, and red spots on the map, whether that's a urban center, town center, or neighborhood center. That we have corridors, which are the gray hatched lines that connect those. Those corridors could be revisited for additional clearing capacity. All of those are within the sewer service area, which is represented by the red line and kind of big dags um around the community. You'll see the green for the rural area is on the map still. We have the downtown form, the in-town area, we call it downtown, but the in-town area that is more urban in character and the edge rural in character. And in between, we have suburban and employment areas still represented on the map.
Do you define basins as they are?
Okay, so basins, they're called that, and it's not hard to see at this scale. But the light blue hatching is just north of the big blue spot. The blue spot is on the amphitheater site largely. That was recognized as a special area, a special opportunity area. And then the basin reaching up from that is that lower reaching the same degree basin. And we recognized that on the map because we thought it was a a policy issue that needed to be addressed. We had several meetings in that area where it came up with the residents, thought this was the way to put it on the map and have this discussion. The larger area that's around kind of the space groger town center node, that's the area where our sanitary sewer is at its strongest. We have the greatest. So we also reflected that on the growth concept map, not as a concern, but as an opportunity and a spot where we could maybe look at diving to development or reconfiguring to development in the future.
The basin is, do you have anything to do with sewer basin?
Those, when it says, yeah, when it said basins, it's talking about sanitary sewer service.
Okay, that's helpful.
The third, that's hard to see, and it's between really the airport and Winterville. Um, it's probably more public utilities staff. Uh, it's kind of over the grain, so it's easy to get lost there unfortunately. They identified that as an opportunity here and if another lift station were paired with the existing lift station that's on the side of town, our only lift station we have right now. It might open up a development opportunity there, which synced up nicely to something that came out of our discussion with community about the Firefly Trail being more than a linear park. If the Firefly was an actual transportation board where folks could live, work, recreate, have other types of things, and get to move home after they're going downtown, we might have something that will build off of it for the next 10 years. And having that additional sewer could allow us to do it in a way that was environmentally sensitive and perhaps could pick up a fiscal sustainability component as well.
So what is the difference between sewer service area and basin? Or do they work and you got to do that for each other?
So where you see they, they, there are two issues that are related. The one basin that's shown above the amphitheater site is outside of our current sewer area, sewer service area. The basin area that is shown, which is really actually two basins, traveling um 29, yeah, um. That, that's a ridge. And so you have two basins on either side. Those are two basin representatives there. And then the basin, we think it's two basins as well, including Winterville and the airport. Um, those are outside of present sewer service area. We just want to make sure the shows issued were represented.
Um, so it might be helpful to have a topo map for availability that has a topo map overlay so you can better understand the potential for future from grabbing that sewer. And how it interacts with those basins and everything, right, more of these. Because installing new sewer lines, we agree this is very expensive and we really have to follow up on the public. The result before it's happening, it's also a tremendous environmental impact. Um, and, you know, it becomes even more complicated when you don't have gravity or things.
So I will tell you, in the development of this map, we worked really closely with Public Utilities about feasibility. Um, and my understanding is, as they work to put together the current service delivery strategy, that information part of this would absolutely proper be undertaken into account. Could reason to say all this. This is even my gradology for the basin. I don't know how to see there. Sort of basins for special consideration. Right, because you've got some kind of unique features around them and then we just won't call these out obviously. But these are ones where we're kind of keying in to say, either some change is likely, given that we've got sewer hallway high for 29, it's under path, it's a different capacity, or these other places where we should recognize them. So coming out of that growth concept map development was stage three on your maps. So in the spring of 2024, we had another round of public input. And at that single time, we had the mayor working with people all put together steering. And that steering committee started work in the spring of 2024. Um, a series of listening sessions, a whole lot of work on data gathering, again, basically checking staff's work. We had almost three months of the steering committee meeting with Public Utilities, Public Works, airport, schools, um hospitals, industry, and making sure that they understood kind of the playing field as it sits today from a land use standpoint. So they'd be better informed for having a discussion moving forward. And so one of the very first things the steering committee did after they did the fact finding was do a shakedown of our existing future language categories. On the left, you see the categories we currently have on the map. Um, it's nine categories. And what was determined was the new map needed some help. The new map needed some specificity that the current map did not have. And the steering committee felt strongly that some of these categories needed to be renamed or made content or be pulled apart. So just going through these real quickly, downtown stayed the same. There's considerable discussion about that, good discussion. Downtown is not your average urban center. Downtown is downtown. Um, it has its own character and should be respected. Employment became employment center, not a big chain, some of the word shit a little bit. General business, which is the category that you see how most of our corridors get split, general business, major corridor, town and urban center, sort of our, our higher tier opportunities for commercial, but they all have different character. And that handout that went around shaped some images of these character areas, we want you to take that away with you. It's not a part of our team. Government, and this was an interesting one that was split previously, currently. Our government category, the ones that I split all the time, it has parks, it has schools, it has buses, it has sewers right in front. Steering committees said, shouldn't our map respond to a school differently than a bus? Shouldn't our map respond to a park differently than a street? And so it has been broken into three categories, government, education, and parks and all. Main street business was divided into that neighborhood center, that's smaller walkable area and minor corridors. Minor corridors are also pedestrian focused roadways in town that connect to a neighborhood center. Next density residential was carried over, um, but then also split into neighborhood center, the well, I'm sorry, yeah, neighborhood centers are connected by. So next density residential, yeah, it was a straight line, I'm sorry. Um, and that'll be, that's also outlined in your text. Purpose of that is to have a little more density than normal. Um, does allow for some mixing of uses at a very low level. Um, rural was broken into two categories and we'll show you why in a minute. But the thing was, we have rural areas that are undeveloped, but we also have rural residential areas that have subdivisions out there. They just happen to be outside of our sewer service area and have a rural character of course. Single family residential, so we took some discussions. Thinking back to those guiding principles we talked about, everywhere should be helping with permits and helping with trade out. There were some discussions about should single family residential remain on the map or not? And I think the steering committee said very clearly, well, it shall, not that it should, but it shall, and so it does. So single family residential is a category as well as traditional neighborhood, which has been translated into neighborhood residential and has slightly.
Yeah. Category I've seen missing, I'm curious if you've talked about the medical.
So as a future land use category, medical can live a bunch. So as far as the use goes, it could be general business, walking place. If it was something that was for research, it might be important to the largest scale. So medical being in of itself is not a future land use category. It sort of lives in some of the other part or.
It's why I didn't come to speaking about the more, more of the one. And of course, I'm also thinking tax exempt, which is, that's a whole other.
Yeah.
That's a whole other math layer that is a consideration, I feel, because it is the service, the new service. So you're saying that we finished with the.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, so we created that, that we're looking steering committee, so let's take send out this and go ahead and pull apart some of these descriptions and try to understand them comparatively. So there's a future language category description index, long way to say the rainbow sheet, bring your hand up. The rainbow sheet has a series of headings across that'll translate what these new user land use designations may be. We talked about it's fair. What kind of activity should be there? Good use. The land use is going to be allowed, the intensity of that future language category, whether it's intended to have a height or more loft coverage on. Um, the design and form is anticipated in very broad statements. And then we did talk a lot at the breach of frequency proximity. Remember, we're trying to get trips off the road. So things that have annual business for a far less frequent live in a different land use category than things that have the. Um, then we also looked at the draw, a resort draw versus a municipal draw versus a local draw. And that's how that rainbow sheet was intended before that. The other thing that we heard, especially coming out of our second round of public input and after our third round, we definitely about experience was taking easy on making a ton of change to this map. Um, we had discussion about every aspect, every part of the community. Takeaway was, let's, let's focus on where the change needs to be and let's not push it everywhere. But what you're seeing on the screen right now, every area in white on that map is unchanged on our current people. So 73% of that map is consistent with our current population. One of the, one of the things, some of those changes are nominal, like our government zone being rolled into three categories, but it's shown here. So you see UGA is in that dark green representation. Green extending north of St. Greek's parks. Um, and you still have the light blue fleck around in there. So this view keeps the government on there, just with both wording change. If you take those off, we end up with 17% of the land that had been changed. Now, looking at this map, you'll notice there's the green, kind of light green, it's a little more noticeable. That light green is the rural residential category of code. And what the steering committee referred to this as was true thing and that. Let's, let's look at what's actually going on out there today and recognize it on a plan. So what you're seeing in that light green are subdivisions that already exist. Dominantly outside of our sewer area and entirely within our rural area. Um, those are subdivisions, they are high farm fields and pastures and that sort of. Uh, their residential subdivision, so a category was created for them. And if you take those off the map. The amount of change that's reflected that was most substantive and six percent of it. Ninety four percent of this map largely remaining unchanged, and we're looking at a six percent that is going to to break. For the first wave of development, this is the twenty year plan, but we think, you know, we'll be revisiting this within here. So the six percent is where we would see. The ability for us to carry that capacity that we're looking for over the next twenty years. Now, this is in combination with the performance capacity that we've already done. And y'all did ask us to study that, um, in twenty twenty four growing up. Um, we have about twenty seven thousand, possibly twenty seven thousand additional residents of our current zone. That's coming up short the last twenty years. You also want your future land use plan to have passive choice. What you're trying to do is set the table for development. And so by adding this amount of change on the map, steering committee felt strongly that what they were doing was getting at one and a half. Maybe one point five to just south of the ten times what our expected growth rates are next one year. Can you come back to that?
So on the on the rural residential in fact, that was a previous one, but on that category, you're saying that it's just a cheap thing. Category, there is no new rural residential.
So that produced this result, so the steering committee worked parcel by parcel to get to this level of specificity with the future. And made it that from the beginning of the spring of twenty five. So here we are, back to our blue chart, the spring twenty twenty five. This map, as we showed you, was taken out of public input. I think we had ten meetings in multiple sites around town, viewing good active discussion, a chance to talk to folks and where they can see their fingerprints on that map. Um, there were some things that we talked through as choices, trade offs, that the steering committee made in the development of the map. And so coming out of that, we were at the final. The final commission voted to recommend it to the hearing, one was for comment and receive public input, second one received public input. Folks, a few live. Recommendation to the mayor and the commission is. Adopt the proposed twenty forty five, also adopt the proposed. The land use narrative script. And that compatibility matrix that ties the future land use with our zoning and allows us to work right away on a map. And that's the compatibility matrix that's also impacted. It's probably the least pleasing to look at, but it's the most important aspect because it brings the future language to life and connects it to our home.
We've discussed on the compatibility matrix, uh, you know, I haven't done any points there, but I'm sort of like wanting to have differences. For that are added or removed, like in the neighborhood residential, um, which is removing for the traditional. Um, I noticed that we moved the CO, left from the CN, which was open one to the R, or maybe the future. Uh, probably the goal, and in the single family, we added R S five. And I'm wondering what kind of, um, within that, and so I'm kind of wondering what kind of reference are that have had to do with.
Well, and so you have a series of things that are part of saying R five or N C O.
Right, right, so we thought it could get to clarify, yes, added that as a possibility for moves, I think it's a possibility, but but. Was there a discussion of that added in single family or the, like, how did you, did they come from? And I've gone through to look at the, the different, uh, you know, the photos of who took it because we did that. More so that before we all, you know, it would be as business, but anyway. It's other, it's good there as well, but that's why I'm willing to, so we're the. What kind of other differences of its compatibility matrix and how it will, uh, you know, how how would this come to it?
The the difference is that I'll refer to Alex here in second to to talk about these types of discussion points about where and why and. Steering committee's discussion on this particular document was focused on opening doors for opportunity in more areas. Not less, not being overly restrictive and recognizing that something's going to ask for a reason using the process. The context of that particular site that we've taken up parcel by parcel development. Um, so the emphasis was really on opening the opportunity for discussion.
But but they restricted it and they. It's a good thing.
On that one, we removed the CO. We removed CO, and that was, again, a special point, where are you seeing that neighborhood residential on the map? You know, a lot of places where over the last five, eight years, we managed to break office type development, see the proposals that were not given through. So we took that as meeting the temperature on that.
Okay.
And let's have the compatibility matrix. What was the question about this?
Well, yeah, I think I have just real concerns about. Um, kind of a nuance between this thing, the story, single family neighborhood, and. And some more dense kind of downtown or mixed density or, um. You know, than than meeting, and I see a couple of areas, you know, where I I'm I'm a real concerned about. That denser land use or more commercial land use. Um, and basically being able to encourage, you know, wiping out this word neighborhood. Um. I mean, I'm really concerned about College Avenue and the the downtown zone, downtown, um, land use. And we have this weird little pocket of commercial and we live on Boulevard and it looks like that neighborhood center. Um, land use designation would encourage, you know, be very much encouraged. You know, pretty dense commercial use, um, I'm all about inviting a little bit of. Modest residential density, but you know, we already have some issues with the, you know, the the sweet little. Commercial uses we do have in the neighborhood, there are parking issues and traffic issues with people coming in from outside the neighborhood, using side streets with cut roofs. And we definitely have a need for, we definitely have a need for residential, to tell me as well. I feel like we should focus that use in this other neighborhood, probably going to encourage. Which that the neighborhood center would be. Go towards mixed density residential, more representative. Essentially, and also, there's a lot of angst about the idea of. Um, for that commercial neighborhood use. Or you know. You know, all down the right and garden department building and defenses, whatever, I mean, there, it can be anything you want. It's such an identity. People, we have these traffic issues, especially in historic spaces. Huge narrow streets and a whole lot of driveways in the neighborhood. We need to focus on inviting people who live in the neighborhood rather than.
So what's the difference of operationalizing your appropriations to do something specific, maybe that's understandable to. Even if I think of the corner of Boulevard and Park Avenue, for example, right?
Yeah.
You could get, um, residential activity buried. A little bit too, but like you've got some specific commercial activities present in there. Is that the kind of thing?
Yeah, right there, and I was. There's that date now, um, I feel like that's an appropriate, oh, invite, I don't know, or. All garden apartment, um, but to invite more redevelopment and commercial use is really negatively. Need of all of this kind of problems, I don't know what to speak about.
And so Bruce, I don't know, you can get some observations throughout that, I mean, obviously there's some different and none better, you know, we're not.
Yeah.
New high descriptions in place of what we've talked.
Yeah, but the the neighborhood center, uh, the one I can tell on the compatibility matrix and referred to the CO and the CN. Zoning, which live on contact, but I don't think anybody has the appetite for contact and we start again.
So in a moment, I've got a little more slide and I I want to hand it off to Alex and the other steering committee members, but also the planning committee members to talk about trade offs, to talk about the discussions. I think you're hitting on one of the things that that group spent a lot of time. Was where do we look at existing character, where do we look at potential opportunity? Frankly, where do we set this level of control knowledge that we're going to be writing some design standards to control for problems? For for the concern that you had, some of those things can be addressed with the warming. Uh, but we just have to get there. Is it appropriate is is the question that we're asking, like. We can definitely talk about some things with the steering committee.
Before you pass it off to Alex, before I'm not to do, um, that explanation, um, going to do that, like, why not? Um, earlier on, when it was coming out, uh, we had guiding principles. Did I miss that at the beginning of what the intention of what was that, I think it's five, right?
Yes, man.
Uh, what what are those guiding principles again?
So the guiding principles were.
That's what, yeah.
But slide nine, I believe, so focusing on corridors and those, where those corner, on our official growth. And that four doors area is one of those neighborhood centers within those that's upon the map. Minimize or target that sanitary sewer expansion. Um, where the capacity within our existing sanitary sewer network. The third was to reduce travel distances, and there are a couple of strategies on how to do that. Um, plan for incremental growth in all neighborhoods that are served by sewer. And then the fifth was make sure that our sustainable growth is both environmentally sustainable and physical. We were a body.
But, um, and and I was going to do, can't say social life without. So, um. Housing, why isn't housing spelled out as, I've seen it on your chart. So wouldn't you say housing would be a portion of the option? I think that housing should be one of the guiding principles. We're we're saying side one is local government, there's, you know, we've done housing studies. You're you're doing the opportunistic handness there, why would housing be one of those five guiding principles?
So with the future land use tab. What we're trying to do and what the steering committee was trying to do is put opportunity on the map for housing. So there's there's a lot of groups that is trying to be reflected on that map to open up doors for new housing in places where you can't go further. So to make it a guiding principle, but just as we're going to do housing, we went further.
No, no, I'm not saying that, we're saying out of the five. They should be serious, uh, and housing should be beyond the values. Yeah, that's up to that, now we could talk about that later, um, but I've I've got news and I agree with the folks. But you don't stay here, if it's not happening, if it's not right, it is not. So we need to put that kind of thing in right to make it do that, so that's my statement on that. Um, there in this, uh, uh, blue plane. Will this, like that, um, wealth of next thing, if we don't, we could, and to go. Is that, I mean, is that part of the meeting?
Increase in reasonable price usually means the land use policy is out of step with reality. So this future land use effort is meant to get it back in step. And so you may have a period of time of adjustment, but the development community may still have some asks. But the hope and the design of this is to have something that does the job, that isn't just part of community, but it's also for them as well, if you knew our community. So there shouldn't be as many asks, you shouldn't be putting enough opportunity on the map, they don't have to ask for special exception. And so if it's turned, long term, it should, it should trend down because. This body has put it on the map already and said, this is where it wants you to go. Um, just as an observation, real quick, kind of before you move to that point of the, you know, before Bruce mentioned the guiding principle. There were, what, if I understand, we just sort of understanding is a fact. And one of those understanding is a fact is that we need more local stock. So if that was real, did that sort of previous slide where it says, hey, we're going to have thirty thousand new residents coming in that ballpark?
But again, I thought again, but at least then. Just like you look at everything else, we should see, it should be just wood now, we can't speculate, we got very. Plus, for coming, that it should be spelled out and grabbed, and like, this is important. Because what is important to you, what is important to you, make a little bit different, it's compelling. Which leads me to my third question about affordability of housing. Now, we're working on this in the gift, because when you talk about affordability, um, that means different stuff to different people. And what we need to do, which we're working on in gift and and Bruce is part of this, is developing tiers of affordability. And that should be presented as how your next gift means. And I think some of it should be in slow of this conversation. Alex is one of my best friends, but Alex is not selling housing to the folks that I'm concerned about, okay? Um, so I think that for so long, that people who are not sitting around in tables of decision making. Their voices are not heard, so we need to write it down, so when somebody pushes it up, we don't got to figure. Oh, we got thirty thousand people coming in and we're going to fix them according to housing. So it needs to be spelled out and elementary for our third grade, and I'm not being picky, I'm just talking about the folks. That are not around these tables, if that's okay. And my last question is, what is any of your urban studies have to do with, um, your, your, um. Information, what, what and how much your urban student has to deal with?
So the timing of the urban pre-study while the steering committee were working was to touch on that economic sustainability budget. Where are we right now with our current land use and isn't paying the bills? And their analysis is kind of synced up with the fact that we're coming up a little short on our annual budget because our land use is coming up. A little short on the capacity to pay off on the infrastructure and the ongoing costs that we have. And so I've got a slide that I can show you if you'd like.
Let me see, do you have it?
I got it here.
Okay.
I got it. Okay, take me a minute, let's let's do it. Um, do that and I'll come back to my. Last slide, so, um. Coming out of that study, this is the last slide in their presentation. Um, what the numbers on the right showing. We let to, we we gave them, we gave them some challenge, so they came up with the fact that we're. Our net position right now with our current land use and taxing and, um, you know, revenue base against expenditures is a problem. Um, we gave them some scenarios to go ahead and model. With frankly, our current zoning and and what you see are those black spikes on the screen are those study areas. So there was an area, um, off license in there, there was an area that's south of, it was essentially redevelopment from shopping center, something available. It was taking the guiding principle and putting it in practice on a map. With that amount of redevelopment, I think in those five spots. Their map showed that we potentially have a three million dollar uptick in tax based revenue above expenditure. This was their illustration of if we have some of these targeted areas, when we do enough of them, we can overcome that shortfall. But our own numbers are showing that we have. And so that was your analysis, and that's how it fit in was, well, let's look at that six percent. That area on the future land use that we're saying could have substantive change. The thinking there is if you had a handful of changes along in that six percent, you could make up for the shortfall that they discovered. Using our twenty twenty twenty, twenty twenty four data. They didn't use outside stuff, they used local data to tell us our story and financially, where we were coming up.
So we don't have opportunities to, um. When is this coming before?
Right now, it's scheduled for the January, February cycle.
Okay, so we have some time for next, um, change or recommendation.
So that, you teed me up, so what's next, right, here we go, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to talk about how I like how this is. Information and it seems like maybe this product could be useful in that list. So they'd be like, but the general business is missing out of this list. So I was driven, driven discharged, right, to be in a bunch like you had on the panel. And general business is falling out. But now that you're seeing a lot of that, so anyway. Anyway, I like the way you've seen the.
Sure. I think I stand with you in this.
I'm beginning.
Sarah was in charge on some stuff.
And then basically this is an extrapolation of the last call.
So what's next? What staff is interested in operating to the commissioners, have the management. Is during the months of November and December following this meeting. Is to have a series of Q and A meetings for the commissioner prepared up, the manager of office and planning staff. So that we can talk through specifics. So that we can look at the map with your district line, if we can look at the map with the area that you're concerned about. And talk through what's on the map and also hear what you're saying that may prove to be a pain. And have that opportunity during those months right before the holidays hit. Coming out of that, we would summarize what we heard, we would present that information. And we would look to the January, February cycle. January planning commission compared those changes if they were self consistent to that level. If there were more or less modifications of what came out of the planning commission recommendation, then we wouldn't have to do that. But we always take air on the side of the board on the table. So January planning commission would allow for January work sessions and February vote of the mayor and the commission of. Send me another question.
I think we made for the first plans, um, ones that, like we said, we have a lot of people there. I mean, the thing about. Eliminating the one offs, now we, the system grants, that's not, that's not.
The current future impact? Well, right now, those things come through the community for discussion, so. We can't. What we're seeing is there's, there's a trend line on those types of requests. Which is usually an indicator that our future language map is not quite fitting with markets looking for or communities expecting. So that's, I think that's where we're coming from, that's where the current people are. But we bring those to you, we bring those to the commission for consideration. And when we adopt to change the future language map, we make those changes to that map. If it's possible to stay. That reflects our future language. And that's separate from zoning. That's the key thing I want to make clear is when we have a request that doesn't sync up with future land use. We have two votes. Future land use is a policy discussion. And the zoning map, which is also a policy discussion, but it also has to design and have functional elements included as well. Future land use, pure policy. And if there was a vote where the future land use map was not an interest in the mention, that would end the consideration. Part of the zoning.
Okay, I still, what is the overarching reason? What is the overarching reason for eliminating that?
The request? Yeah, I mean, that's the overarching reason is developers coming in and they have found a piece of land. And they want to change future land sources to apply to that land in order to do what they want to do. Rather than having other choices on the map. That are by right.
But it seems bad, that, you know, you have power, you have authority. It's not what we, but sometimes we advise them, okay, this is what we want. This is part of that, it's a little bit people on these maps, what we do want by, knowing that we have quite clearly definitely, yes, we keep our, we are clearly for these. Our routines, the areas that don't have, you can do for capacity in some areas or that's developed. But this, when that happens, it's not the citizens that we have. The, that means the decision is the developer telling us what they want. And give off the power. But I think if that's, that's what our policy is, we, we got that there, now we have a fear of that argument for, or we're not. And that we need to back the point. But it's recommended, you know, it's recommended housing. And so I, so immediately there's what I've today, why? So a lot of times that we change are, say, somebody wants to build a apartment building that would only have fifty more beds compared to what would be allowed there by. So it's usually like an incremental thing that we're asking, because the person asked before and then we get them. So. I mean, some situations like the president. And yeah, that's why we would set multiple allows. But that is, you know. We see most of our, most of the things that come before, like these tweets that are more reflective of what's going on in what. Times in the neighborhood or in our area and that are asking the community to give you a plan, people have to focus on this. And we, we have to get that right by far as good as. So developers know our point. In the community, particularly here in that city. On guiding principles, I highlight the targeted sewer expansion and both the paths from the cities to the work words. Would you see the same thing as, would you be the same? In areas? Can you say, do you say targeted? Say, that's not the, the thing.
That's the system.
Right, you can imagine the targeted.
Yeah.
And then on the road test of the. Or the one thing that, that wants to be, that I'm speaking to this. Saying, it's definitely the same thing.
And, and you know, guiding principles, there's an economy of work. And so what's maybe missing there from one to two is that. Targeted sewer system expansion, totally being a new pipeline, a new area that we can serve. And the folks do after the semi-hauling where it's such a try to grow the pattern within our existing network. So two different analyses from that one city. Yeah.
Yeah, we're stepping down that regional plan that we're considering. And I have, I think what, I hear talking that he wants to, but I don't have time. What does it mean to focus on regional, regional?
So that was steering, right? So within their discussion and looking at the data, those things completely can put together a platform. And then them working together and reflecting on the principles and that input. The opportunities for change on the map. Those were the areas where they broke between the forty seven percent. That map, where the color on that.
And then you did that in the city, which would be the first of its size.
So the six percent is the, the part that is really the greatest amount of change. It's actual change, if we had changed the zoning to respond to this new future land use map. The area shown in six percent, you see the greatest change in zoning regulations. So there.
Oh, that is, that is true. Oh, that's.
Some of that, when I put, it's like, if you would change the name of the, I would.
So, thank you. When we look at that six percent, and this is where I think, I think hoping that we, 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 uh, um. Is that some of that six percent is also because people. You know, they tend to, the business area, it's on his subdivision, having been made from nine to twelve. And a lot of times. Those are names that are different, maybe there's a character beyond the description. But zoning opportunities, windows, categories aren't significantly different. Or we can keep them as they are now. Like right now, any piece of like, you know, if you have a, you have a business corridor, that doesn't mean. It's in the test of one, business corridor and the general business, you have everything tomorrow and to, you know, yeah, it's. To the same kind of things, the business and the, and the more. So the future of zoning is to leave. And, and maybe now there are something as a, you know, in order to public forum, like where are the. Where are the main, where are there examples of places where there's a significant change? Not just the thing, but it needs information for the kind of development that we're going for. But that's what, that's like, that's what I need to see in my area, right? And so, I mean, in one way, you are reducing the, the, the CO or the C. Yeah, the CO adds some areas where it was before. And in some areas more, now, and then this gets to my second question, do I get clear for everyone in the world of the still challenges now? In single family, for example, you're adding in RS five. But that doesn't mean everything's free to come out of RS five, right? There's still like the senior free plan, still be RS twenty five when it gets placed. But, and right now, the single family RS eight is allowed. But we're not getting, we're not getting and accepting a rezonance from, so you create RS eight. And so that's part of, well, part of the challenge I have thinking about this now. Has to do with what we do now as well in terms of if I have something in a single family and where all these options, but it's. It's so on RS twenty five. You know, in what circumstances do we make a decision to allow RS eight? I mean, is that, is the developer saying, well, you got it in here, that's one of the variations. One that, you know, that depends on how, how it's going to be. And so those, those variations exist right now that could get someone's degree nervous, right? And, but we're not doing that, so. So I guess my question too, when I look at this is, and maybe the things that are over there helping me out, you know, we're. But though we, even if the zone was allowed, it's a language or, or category. Why don't we, why are we like, you have to change, that's. I get a developer coming and said, you said that's low though, I want to put RS eight here. Why, what is the goal or the rationale, like, why do we say no? Like, in there, we have it too. And it's that last one, isn't it? That last one is right here.
Not sure on the, again, but.
But a lot of them are pretty, a lot of them has, you know, a lot of them are pretty concrete. And this last one about the character of the area or something, a lot of those are. And that's what we would, we would use. And we'd still be using that map. So that's, you might not, we might not say, well, I have to put a RS five in here, even though it's allowed according to this. It's one of the options, one of the options to allow. So these, these future land use categories are sort of informing what the character of an area, which in general. And then the zoning goes down to the, the specific parcel in terms of what's absolutely.
How can you build, what can you even shoot you want? And the future land use is the general character of the street.
So we do. Now, here we are, and are there any major answers where we are changing something that would be, you know. Be a significant change for the person on the street.
If there's such, maybe take a, take this opportunity for like a case study.
Yeah.
That, that is part of that six percent of the, that map here. And we might look at the intersection of, when our way of visual British road.
Yeah.
Or, or, or something on the east side.
Definitely on the east side.
This was a good opportunity to talk to the steering committee, one of the things, it really drilled down to making. Looks ultimately to your point about that. So the six percent map, it intends to do the bulk of what you're asking. It show where the change is focused. I think you added another question, but we would have to pull together a little bit of analysis further. And we can do that, we can map it. Is where is the major change from the compatibility matrix? Is what did you change on the map? Not the zone, not the future land use map, zone. In the information. Hopefully I'm saying. We can definitely provide that and make that a part of our. But, you know, this is, this is the focus on the east side and the southern part of the county where there was change, you could go all the way to the end. What you're seeing. Or in, so there's the airport. There's the ladders. Hopeful. Your crooner. Your crooner. What you're seeing on this map is a handful of designations that are renewed. Neighborhood center. Town center. Minor corridor is the light gray. Major corridor is the heavier gray. Major corridor is typically where you had, all of this was where you had sanitary sewer and service. The major corridor was, was a direct translation of maybe more commercial general type buildings. Whereas the minor corridor was closer to the commercial office neighborhood. So you can see Dan's school, if not a major corridor, the minor corridor. Broad to the outside of the intersection and beyond is a major corridor. Off line.
Well, I see it. Because you go, you know, all of these, you're doing city corridors. And you're not, I don't even know what, what I'm going to say, what it is, you have to, to paint the salmon within the.
That's neighborhood center.
Neighborhood center. And that goes down to including some of those, this year shows. And I'm not sure what, so that, there's, there's an example where. I, those are some of the apartments there that have been there forever. It's, it's changed its name. I'm not really sure what the future land use is for that right now. It's like it gives a little, it's a blue, it allows us to be a little more. Right, right. But that's, yeah. Yeah, so that, that actually is what's going. Extensity residential. Right, so now it's actually changing because an extensive residential is what? Um, because we only have the CN where the, what is it? Now it's going to be, that's salmon color, which is the same as all these. So I think it could now, the other thing with the, where if we're reading all this, right? You would be able to do significant more different development there. Like somebody could come and scratch that out and put in some, you know, shopping. Yes, yes, so we have apartments on something that is right now, people in. Right, 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 so this is where that ground thing is, I think, because like, calling that a neighborhood center. And the update. People have, continue to have what it. Or it could be really long, we need an apartment and. We could actually allow the land to come site, whereas right now, we're just being, yeah, yeah, being subtle. Right, but I mean, it's ground thing, except for it's also allowing, that's ground. It's also will allow a lot of businesses to be in that area. It's raised, everything is significantly changed, where it could be, you know, that's a good example. So when you show, when you're showing us what you have around the beach, that, those are the things that I really want to see to understand.
Alex, you were responding.
Yeah, in fact, just very briefly. That is an example of what you should say of this will be a full year map. We would keep as a committee reminding ourselves what's there today. The need that's there for today is not necessarily the need. We want to do our best to land twenty years right on the dock. We certainly know that's. Changes that we didn't, yes. But that is, it's, Bruce had mentioned it earlier. If not there, then where?
Oh, yeah.
A little bit of that, so the types of roads, the corridors and. Minor and, and I may refer to the committee members, that's about, shortly about Alex. We took a parcel in a parcel or across the street from each other. One was town center, the other's neighborhoods. And that might have taken an hour.
And that might have taken an hour. Uh, and we're looking in the future, where is that? So where people don't have to drive or by or walk, why?
But that is, and some of these things like that, I mean, we don't have control over what the public does into a small property, you know, that we don't have control over. We don't, we don't, are behind. But there is an example, actually, that place, because that place is pretty run down. So it's a place where someone might come in and say, I see an opportunity here, and they can have. If somebody that's near them, you know, fairly new, no one's going to come in and play. You'd be no longer pressing what they have.
We looked at that every time since. I mean, it was like, then we backed it off. We went to the school, neighborhood, so.
And then I'll be. My question about the language of the. The language that I think. It's mainly outside of the, 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 the zone. And so I, I changed it because I need, some of the people in the community knew that there were a lot of these actually around, because it's been five or, what, you know, it's a pain. You know, like the, um, the note, you know, all of those, because I was knowing that particular need. And it was along the same time where there was development and. And so when I think about what's, let's say, they want this area that we work out, there was, in the, in the, in the recognition of, of the town community. See, see, fine specifics, I completely forgive, except you want this. Specifically, it's a mile, because that particular, um, development did not represent the fabric of act. And I was funny with that maybe. And that was really hard. And I'm, that, that type of language is not key. It's all we, if someone outside is saying this, I'm going to want, I definitely want to try and explain. That's the understanding, and it, I worked hard, I meant to get the town, just want to get that a lot of the time. But that, I, I, I just wanted to express for the room, before the audience, that what someone else wants to do for someone else's community, that is hard to.
Now, you were saying, the staff reports, there is a section of that staff report where we try to use the flash development character of the language policies. And we are arguing if that language is on here. And so I hear what you're saying, and that's absolutely something to fucking down. This effort will help us with that language, honestly. And, and help us have something that we've all discussed, that we have shared in terms that we all. And, and contemporary ones too, right? Even the similar to the minority because of this, what to get the adult. And now, I think that's something you want to go ahead. I was just going to say, we're having a nice conversation here. That I may have been the one that actually said, because that is a term I used or pulled out of the Detroit Preservation Commission. And it's a certain deal, and that's people are private, and we're not here to get in on project. It was using every available inch to put a house on it, had alleyways and things like that, that just that was the word that came out. I believe it was me, if it wasn't. If it was a feel and, but it would, it would have been not just a feel, it was a there at once, all of these things, it was sort of certain. Right. But that word is not in any of this language. Facilities, it didn't fit there in this. Yeah, I understand that. I didn't do it.
There are many, I was wondering if I can do that. Thought it's, it's similar, um, I think, but I got on the road, I'm trying.
Similar, we don't talk about the campus street, not like that topic, that is. Yeah. It's, Melissa.
Yeah, yeah. And it's commonly used. Like a violation. Um, my question has to do with portable housing in our inclusion areas. Is that part of the discussion at all? I feel like our inclusionary ordinance, zoning ordinance is not being taken advantage of as much because it's already easy enough to build to the density that developers want to build. And I feel like there's places where, you know, we kind of like have the density, we might encourage them to come in and get that, um, to get the board. I'm kind of looking at the mixed density residential and the neighborhood residential, wondering if like we should drop RM two off. And I'm wondering if like, if somebody were to come in to, say they were to come into a neighborhood residential, then would you stay? Um, that allowed RM two's that may extract. Would they be allowed to take advantage of? And then go up that RM two, because then it would no longer be the land needs to allow it? Or, if that works into our inclusionary zone, they can make this up. It's a chance that.
So I think what you're hitting on is a key point, that the regulatory tools that come after this are super important. And understanding where our inclusionary zone, for example, does or doesn't work, or needs to be the incentive to go to that upper level of density, that's what's important. But, but the land use doesn't necessarily give by right, that of the left. Right? Because future land use is non-zoned.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm trying to get at, would somebody have to get a future land use change in order to take advantage of the inclusionary zone, if it's above, above the land use, that, you know?
Only if they needed the future land use change to then ask for them, that allows for inclusionary zone.
Yeah, I feel like we should keep that in mind, but.
That's pretty little, right?
So, to encourage that zoning, isn't it, you're in a third of the needed.
Well, of course, the way that it works now, you could use the existing zoning category, the RM two. You could use that category and say, okay, well, you know, fifty percent, um, if I follow the grid, so I go thirty-six bedroom acres. But I could do that. Similarly, if a person could say, hey, I really want to go to much more than. So, and that would be a lot right, if it's, if it's six bedroom acre, they could say, I really want to go to RM three and, uh, and get seventy-five bedroom acre, because I want to go change the zone and use the inclusionary zoning ordinance. Now, I, I do think that probably some of our future work is going to have to be around just how the inclusionary zoning ordinance works, and I think we're doing something to put it down.
Well, concern about, you know, the pushback to some of that denser, you know, we want those affordable units. Like, we're not getting them encouraged because of, you know, developments going in places where it's pretty.
And, and that really will be kind of the next wave.
Right, for super intensive zoning in certain areas. So I feel like if you try to, to then be kind of modest, that will help encourage a little bit of affordability, affordable units, without overwhelming.
When we go from a future land use designation to a zoning designation, that's really what we want to back.
I, yeah.
Well, I, I did a little bit. So it sort of happened, and it's a two-year process that we've had. I see everything in three D or layers. And this map, good. We haven't specifically said this, so when any one had, I'm like, whoa, they're down. The map shouldn't influence where the price of a house should go. Uh, it shouldn't influence, it, it should. You, you hit some things where other things will influence that. But, but the future land use is all in a twenty-year map. So if we were to say, well, this up here is where the, that housing, either whether it's affordable or whatever the terms we're going to use down here is, that's going to figure itself out low. This is residential. If you want to build residential, then this is, these, these are the areas that that's going to be, you're not going to say no.
I think what I'm trying to get at is, if a particular land use category would prohibit taking advantage of the, of the inclusionary zoning, if that density bump bumps the development into category that is not allowed by the, under a lot of things. So, but, you know, say, say, a land use stop to, um, line land use, um, if somebody wants to take advantage of inclusionary zoning, it's the more units. But it wants to be above the line. We have to change that under line ways, or are current people going to allow you to violate the line?
It, it wouldn't violate if, if it would be a policy enforcement. So if, if RM one is okay, which it is for an intensive zoning, and if that zone piece of property is, RM one's definition is consistent with people on you, then everything's good.
Okay. And you can get those higher, the higher that you need.
Correct. The, the density comes from the zone, it comes from the zone.
There are people who also ask me, if the, as far as that, or especially trying to help me, who are very bad at that. Great density that gets into RM two, it's not, not in that, for own.
You have to get to that, you have to change each other also.
We have to change it to thirty-two bedroom. Yeah, that's a big part now. The, the, the ordinance. Makes a new doubt.
Well, and, 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 here. All of the interesting incentives of, of affordable units. And, and, and we, you know, I think we definitely need to have that competition, but that's a different competition. That's where I'll be.
No, I think so, even then. I think, I think it's me. Okay, thanks. About to, I think, kind of where Melissa's at, that's. Well, Melissa. Affordable, affordable housing, I, you know, so the last, um, future land use comprehensive plan, that was what you had?
So the last time the future land use was adopted by American Mission was part of twenty twenty two.
Twenty, twenty two.
But it did not, it would carry forward largely of what was coming eighteen, twenty thirteen, two thousand eight. There wasn't a lot of revisiting of the future land use map in the twenty twenty-three. And that's why it was the first action item was, let's, let's break it out and let's, let's go again.
So I guess that, like, it sounds like some from two thousand, two thousand. It sounds like a full-blown, um, future land use plan was not. It's, it looks like you did certain pieces, you didn't leave um, the whole thing from scratch, most from time to time. And, and I guess that led me into a place where I'm bothered. Um, because in two thousand, the late nineties and two thousand, it was when gentrification did begin. So if you didn't, if you just made minor changes and didn't address the, oh, I already did it. Um, um, and, and, and that, and nobody spoke around the table. It looks like there was something that still continued that probably needs to be addressed. So that's why I do think putting affordable housing as one of the guiding principles to writers, so if that's not something that can change, developers, now, what that looks like, I don't know. But I do know, uh, that something happened in two thousand that changed these standards, right? And if we're only doing bits and pieces and not addressing some problems that we all keep kicking the hand, me too, kicking the hand, it's not going to get resolved, that's what's. Um, the other thing, we're talking about future land use. How has, if any, has UGA been about these? Um, they, they're, they're the landlords, technically. And we're building for their students. And I do know they do have a plan of, of how they're going to manage students, um, coming from the future. So, uh, before it comes back to us, Bruce, uh, they want, hopefully there will be a conversation, at least to show them where we're going and see if they can contribute a little bit to this. But it's not fair for the government to take on everybody's pressures when we all share in this community together. So, again, I think affordable housing should be integrated in the guiding principles. Uh, so developers, I think that UGA should be brought in at some point. If they walk away and say, at least we do it by each other, that, that's my point. So, and, and even create maybe a student district, you know, maybe it's too late, I think not. I'm not sure, so might. But the students are all over it. And it, it, it makes it hard for that are advocating for, um, the moderate, low income folk that have lived here forever, it just makes us all uncomfortable. But if we are just picking pieces of a plan that may have happened back in the nineteen eighties, and we're not addressing where we got the problem. We're, we're a bigger problem, or ignore where we already see we have problems. These happen. I just am uncomfortable, um, supporting something that has not taken into consideration the people that have been hurt.
Just quickly, follow up. Yeah. Uh, so UGA did have a seated favor, uh, Alison McCullough, the, the community liaison director of the town. And so, um, she heard everything and was part of, uh, a non-voting part, we would say, as a structure. UGA way of, of doing that. And so they're, they were aware of everything, that is her job, to basically go back and discuss everything. And I do know that there were discussions, and they, they have seen the map, they understand the map. Speak for them, are they good with the map, or good with the map or not? The other thing, it, it isn't at least available to us, yes. For UGA, it's my understanding, they, they won't stay out of county business as much as possible. Uh, they actually only own five percent of UGA, so five percent of part count. So it's really a very minor part, so it's, that's a lot for one person. Uh, or for one instance, rather. Uh, that's not, always make sure we understand, that is not all the government profit that goes on a fire. But, so, and then the, the gentrification, and I hope I'm not out of line in saying this, a lot of that is just some, a, a property being built and people breaking the ordinances and calling, you need non-family members in there. That's not a map's fault. That's a, we can't enforce our policy part. And so, and, and I, that's not been for anything at all. So I, I just want to make sure that's pulled apart on what we're doing here is this housing is allowed there, for instance. Now, who the person is that builds a house there. That, that again, this map can't say who can build it.
But if you say that, is our zoning and, um, people map says that, and the ordinances are followed? When you say just, you already minimize the folk that I'm talking about. Not just. This map, it takes what happens is going to look like ten years from now. That's what, that's what it looks like, that's what it's supposed to be for. And there's some folks that don't feel like it's going to be long. This map should ensure that they are going to have a place in that. How you do it, I don't. But this is not doing it right now.
Yeah. Well, and, and then, the, um, again, it's, it's not, it, it can't say do them do anything. That's, that's what I understand, we're, we're not, that was not in, in our writing as well. But I don't disagree on some things that size or a neighborhood, can somebody build a, him room, a part of the building in the middle, that's handled in the map, so.
And, and I guess I'm okay with that, I do remember. If I don't say, whether I'm wrong or right, if I don't say it was on my mind, then you're going to get the, some folks are going to get the, okay, that this is okay. And at least you're putting it out there. Uh, you can come back and say, we tried it, or we never prayed this thing out, but I do believe what happened in 2000 with the east side, there was not enough voices to push it, that, that's the one.
And I'd like people to help with that, because you're right to point out, in 2000, future land use, one discussion, the zoning that came after it, that was another.
Yeah.
So as we were translating on future land use, it's a zoning, we have the Baxter Broad area and we had this area just over the river that had zoning categories after lengthy discussion that we walked back, that we put on the map as a proposal, because they did the guiding principles and they were opening the door for those property owners to have more potential for their property. What we learned was, these neighborhoods did not want that degree of change. And so within years' time, we had an item in front of the American Mission, essentially walking back the zoning change that we proposed from Park Central High School to St. Mary's and for just over the river to the water. So you're right, there was a zoning discussion that required us to double that and put things back to where they were. So I think the lesson learned on that is, take a look, we like these areas that are not changing, all along the period in life, be part of. So this effort is not looking to to focus on these in-town areas and unfairly stack the debt on those neighborhoods. And, and I can tell you, there's somebody sitting right over my right shoulder who wouldn't let that happen.
I don't think that'd be enough.
And that, even if we had tried, so, um, yeah, like, lesson learned, um, from a planning effort standpoint is, is that's not the move to make. And if there's going to be a zoning zone, it's going to be at a lift, it's incremental. It doesn't hit it so hard that the investment community is going to go kick on that maybe. We're going to do it at an even, easy tide run. Um, but that's not, that's not part of this, this, those aren't changing.
And I do understand that, um, the future land use and the zoning are two separate things, I do understand. I do understand that, um, um, the zoning is, this is archaic or whatever, so that's a whole nother thing you've got to deal with. But I do, but I did want to put it on the table in a way that, because folks, folks need to understand that or not, I guess, I'm not criticizing nobody.
Well, we get that, Jennifer, uh, you know, here a little bit wrapped on this discussion.
Just wanted to piggyback on what you said, came to my critical question. It feels like, it's, I guess, is this a rare assumption? In 2000, when we went to this, we, that was the birth of the green belt, right? And we were trying to get the first time we tried to push that in, in town. So it's either zones to be, and the east side that was allowed, they could have walked back. It feels kind of leagious in the same scope though, because you want to be able to develop that area so residents can live there, but a lot of what you're carrying now is happening by right and that it never comes in front of us, they can do it. So I get some of the questions, these are always going to strike about where we can
There are some other things that exist outside of the zoning ordinance that are still in development, but we'll talk about that in just a minute. It's always helpful, I think, with short-term rentals to start with, what do we have? What is it right now? Because it's pretty complicated. We've been operating with this ordinance now for a year and a half. And the nuts and bolts of it are this. Our short-term rentals are recognized as a use. They live in zoning in Athens. That allows us to issue permits, not licenses, but permits, and it allows us to do review with the fire marshal's involvement, finance department's involvement, and building, make sure spaces are safe and that they're functioning in a way that works like a mini hotel, which is essentially kind of what the use is. So we have two types of short-term rentals. We have a home occupation short-term rental and a commercial short-term rental. The fundamental difference between the two is with a home occupation short-term rental, the owner of the property or a long-term tenant are present. We have somebody who lives there year-round. With a commercial short-term rental, you're not required to have somebody living there year-round. It can solely function as a short-term rental and just have guests and never have a long-term occupant, never have an owner occupant in it. So as you can imagine and you picture those things when you hear that description, home occupations right now, which is a floor Larry, like if somebody has a beauty salon at home or they do online marketing from their house, you can get a home occupation permit. That's because that owner, that long-term tenant, is present at that address. And we have somebody accountable for that off, for that, that commercial use. It also has a residential look and feel. There's no signage. There are no business vehicles there. And it occupies a small portion of the house. So a home occupation short-term rental has somebody who's living there. Those are largely permitted in almost every zone that you have the opportunity to have a house. That's the opportunity for something that is single-family zoned to have a short-term rental. Single-family zoning, RS zoning, doesn't allow for commercial short-term rentals because it expects an occupant there that lives there year-round. So commercial short-term rentals are allowed by right in our commercial zones. They're allowed by right in, in a limited way in, in employment, I believe it's employment office. And what we've come to understand is this special use permit from what we have in the ordinance today has created some opportunities for trying to figure out what to do with the commercial short-term rentals. So one of our tasks with that special use permit approval, which is allowed right now in RM, EI, and AR zones, is to look at that process and revisit it with this group for discussion. And then the third was upon adoption, there was a provision put into the ordinance that allowed for a two-year sunset period for any legal non-conforming short-term rentals. So let's think about the legal non-conformings as maybe a third category of short-term rentals. The legal non-conforming ones were the ones that operated during the moratorium that the mayor and commission adopted. So 2022 to 2023, we had a year-long moratorium. We had a period of time in that slot where the community had a number of properties that were operating as short-term rentals at a time when the code really didn't have any kind of regulatory definition for that. And so recognizing that as a property right for those people that were operating is what this legal non-conforming list was intended to do. Presently, we have 711 identified legal but non-conforming short-term rentals. Those short-term rentals, by virtue of that status, do not have to get a permit. They do not have to get a zoning permit. What they do have to do is everything else. So there's a business occupation, occupation tax certificate, and there are taxes that have to be paid for that operation. Those are still things that they have to do. But there's no permit review for those. So that's kind of what we got here today. You gonna move? Come on, man. All right. So some mapping that we shared with you previously, and I thought we might need it again. We did some heat maps of where we have our, all the short-term rental properties that were identified at the time of, well, actually, this was a year into operation. So this is everybody. This is legal non-conforming. It's home occupations. It's the commercial ones. Where you see a cooler color, you have fewer of them. Where you see the hot colors, that's where we have a concentration. So looking towards downtown and just over the river, you can see these concentrations. This next slide, which is largely similar, is just our legal non-conforming. And so this shows you that our pattern of folks that were operating prior to us having regulations is largely still the same pattern that we have with the folks that have received permits. Part of the reason why this map hasn't changed yet is the vast majority of what we've documented are the legal non-conforming uses. 711, as opposed to, I think it's three or four dozen at this point that have gotten permits. So the mapping is going to skew that way because we have more data points for our legal non-conforming. All right. So from a short-term rental program discussion for today, we really had three things. One was to revisit the duration of the sunset clause for legal non-conforming short-term rentals. So again, that sunset clause is for those that are operating without permit and they're doing that legally. Part of that discussion was to also look at removing the need for a relief valve. If the sunset clause is dealt with, that need for relief goes away if it's extended far enough. Second thing, to remove the special use permit approval for commercial short-term rentals and just figure out where short-term rentals are okay and where they're not and let the zoning do the work. Third, to look at licensing of short-term rentals. This was the discussion point of planning commission. Something that the mayor and the commission said that they wanted to look into. This is directly related to enforcement of short-term rental regulations, but it would exist outside of the zoning code. So for today, your text amendment that just got handed out does not include anything about licensing because that is yet to be developed and it would not live in the zoning order.
So the same way that alcohol licensing lived in finance.
Correct.
This could go to finance or somewhere else.
That's right. Okay. So looking at the sunset clause. Could you, yes, man?
Back to that one. This is a real basic question. The can we go to the previous slide?
Yep.
Okay. The licensing of STRs, if that happened, would that apply to the legal non-conforming ones that are in existence or could they exist as they are?
So that would be something that would have to be taken up with that licensing provision. I don't have an answer for that.
Okay, so since that's, maybe that's something that the attorney's office, when we get to it, can address whether or not you can you know, just like we aren't making people follow the regulations, the new regulations for STRs that they already existed, would, can we allow a licensing for already existing
activities?
Activities that weren't licensed before, but we can get to that on a later slide.
Okay.
Good question. So you have these three requests. I remember quite clearly there being a discussion of setting some strict criteria by which a property may or may not qualify to get that STR or be allowed to oper- or get the special use or be allowed to operate. And I don't see that, like.
You mean with regard to the special use?
I mean, with regard to it existing at all, if any properties, I mean, here we're talking about not allowing them at all in our zones. And I feel like, you know, there are certain properties that it's, you know, makes sense to be STRs, you know, especially when it comes to in these teeny tiny little houses in historic neighborhoods that are not very functional in any other way. You know, these little one bedroom properties that see high tenant turnover that tend to dilapidate because they don't bring in a lot of income as, as rental properties. I mean, I kind of feel like we should come up with some criteria and be like, if this property has the parking allowances and the buffers and, you know, not have a whole lot of potential to be a family home, then maybe it's okay to exist as an STR in a neighborhood.
And that would be a later commission action. Certainly, if you want to write something or commission find option, that would be a thing to keep in mind. And I would say that the standards for how to operate in approval are still in the ordinance. So the expectation about where you park, how many you can have, the difference between the home occupation version and the commercial version, all of those standards would still, they're not being changed. To your point about availability of units, I think that was a discussion point previously with this group. Go ahead.
If I could, because I remember that discussion that we had on the planning commission because we were like, oh my God, if we're going to see all of these requests, we're going to need some sort of like guidelines for how to, you know, what to do, what not. But I think, I think before we go down that rabbit hole, we should figure out whether or not we're going to like keep the sunset, go to a licensing scheme. Like, like, I, I can, I see what you're saying, but I think maybe before we figure all that stuff out, we should figure out the the larger picture first and then figure out if we need to come up with that criteria. Does that make sense?
Mike, you want to add to that?
I just, I had a question kind of about the existing categories that we have. And if there's any definitions on the home occupation standards and definitions for that, just some clarity on what we currently have. How do you qualify for a home occupation?
So you, you have to be the owner occupant or the demonstrated tenant, long-term tenant of the property. You would provide information that corroborates that. So one of the things we ask for is driver's license, information that shows that address. We're not looking at driver's license, but just validation of voter registration, something that places them there. If they're a renter or that owner occupant. We would also corroborate that with tax rolls, certainly. That's step one. Step two then is the operational questions. So you get to have one short-term rental in a home occupation. So it can be in the main house. It could be in an accessory structure. That has to be identified and then adequate parking has to be shown. And then there's a punch list of sort of operational guidelines that come from our fire marshal and from our building inspection department for largely safety concerns to make sure that they're operating properly.
Well, I was just wondering, like, what kind of follow-up is there? I guess, does it tell if anybody's actually living there? And if somebody just gets a driver's license that says they live there, is there any, like, is that all they need to prove? Would there be any follow-up that they're actually living there?
So there's documentation created to say, to corroborate that we can say yes in the first place. And then if there's some performative thing that happens afterward that brings code enforcement to play, then we're going back to that original document and we're comparing the facts of what, what is actually going on. And ideally, they sync up. If they don't sync up, then we have a series of ordinance violations that we're then having to deal with.
Or is there, I also wondering, is there any, you know, when you have a home occupation business, it's usually limited to like 25% of the floor space or something. If you're just kind of, is there any limitations for these home occupancies, STRs, like, can it only be 25% of the house or are they allowed to say it's a home occupancy, but then still rent it out 100%?
One listing. So that's the limitation. So a home occupation can't be to rent the house and separately have a listing for the accessory building. That'd be two. Or some, some folks we've seen list their houses and it's three and four listings because each room is a separate listing. That's not what a home occupation allows. You get one, one listing. So that's the limitation. Rather than a square footage, it's the singular short-term rental at that property.
Okay.
So, good application on that. A person who has four bedrooms in their house and rents out a bedroom, short-term rental, but they're still in their house. They, they can only rent one bedroom. They cannot rent.
But they could rent two bedrooms, but they get one listing.
One listing.
Right.
And it's all.
Oh, I guess what, they cannot rent a bedroom to person A and then a bedroom to person B separately.
Right.
That's two lists. That's two lists. That counts as two. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. We've learned a lot of things the last month and a half, I mean, year and a half about the short-term rentals that we, that we'd be learning. So revisiting that sunset clause, what we heard from this discussion before was let's consider eliminating the sunset clause. There was discussion about, should it be 10 years? Should it have some other duration to it? I think what we heard in a, in the pre, prior work session was, let's look at it going away entirely and what does that do? And so that would allow for the 711 documented legal non-conformings to continue without the zoning permit, still paying taxes, still keeping their documentation with finance correct. And that list over time would likely reduce. And so it would change by ordinance, the way the wording is. It would change if there's a change in ownership because it rides with the ownership. It would change if somebody abandons that use for 12 months or more. And it would change if an owner or operator decided, I'm not going to run this business anymore, which is kind of abandonment, but they were more intentional with it. And we had a handful of people actually say that when we sent out the notices about the short-term rental list, the legal non-conformers, we had a handful of people. I, I don't want on this list. I'm not doing that anymore. They came off. Or they can come into conformance with the regulations. So one way to get off the list is to get a permit. There's a handful of these that exist in a way where they are commercial in format but are operating in a zone where we can't allow for a commercial short-term rental today. And so.
Remember that on those number charts later on?
That, we're actually, we're still trying to pin that down with the software, the proprietary stuff that we have. It's kind of filming. But, but that number is large. We'll tell you that it's, you know, what we're seeing is two-thirds or north of two-thirds exist in that pocket.
This is, I made notes on this. I mean, basically, we're saying Airbnb won, neighborhood's lost on the commercial use, okay, on the commercial use. I mean, the other ones, the home occupation, they may not have realized it's easy. They might, I mean, that's, that's like, that's another thing. So to me, when I'm looking at that legal, the ones in the single family, because that's clearly where they are from what you showed us down here in another chart, that's where most of the owners are in single-family neighborhoods. And if it's owner occupied, the person hasn't done the paperwork, right? So it's the ones that are commercial in the single-family neighborhood. I don't see, I mean, did we discuss this as a, did we discuss this as among the commission or is this just a planning commission?
The county commission had a discussion on short-term rental.
But did we, did we talk about taking off the sunset completely? Because I remember talking about the RM.
With the introduction of the regulatory framework.
Yeah, but, but that, to me, then that's like the regulatory, I need to know if the regulatory framework applies to already existing STRs. And that's the question that, that, that.
That's forthcoming, sort of the one that the attorney's office is going to talk to us about.
Picture you get next week about, okay.
Just, what can you share what the memo might be saying there, Doug?
Yes, or like that, just give a.
I think I need to, as we discussed, there's current litigation challenging Tybee Island's licensing scheme. They have a licensing scheme, there's a R.
We have to call it scheme.
Yeah.
Program.
System.
Oh, 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 yes, provide some, uh, a memo.
All right. So at this, at this point, we don't know if it's illegally or, or enforcement. I mean, that's a whole other thing, like viable option.
So there is some work on that, but at least, let's, let's take a look at this piece and then be keeping that in mind because that, of course, is important, obviously. But let's look at least at the planning and zoning case that Bruce has got.
The other ask was to revisit special use permit consideration. The challenge here was the criteria for that and when to say yes and when to say no and how to pull those apart and, and have guidance from the ordinance on that as to when that decision can be made. What we heard was put together a proposal where the special use permit is no longer part of the ordinance. And so new commercial short-term rentals would be allowed as, in the draft that you have by right in all the commercial zones as well as the AR zone outside of AR neighborhoods. And AR neighborhoods are something that have been on our code. It's a, it's a delineation between the unsubdivided AR intentionally versus the areas that, that have a subdivision scheme that was approved through the planning process. So we've got all those mapped. New commercial short-term rentals would be allowed by right in those zones. With the text amendment that's sitting there, new commercial short-term rentals would not be allowed in our employment industrial or the RM, and they would remain unpermitted in all RS zones. That's just worth saying. Think clearly, this is not a change that we're proposing is to impact RS with commercial short-term rentals. But that's quick summary of the language that you have in that text amendment. What staff's provided is all the use tables where we've made changes. Now, the third aspect of this was, was the licensing issue. And I think we kind of touched on that, that there's guidance that's forthcoming. The intention behind this that we heard was that the licensing would be intended to provide improved accounting, enhanced enforcement. And as I noted before, it would live outside of the zoning code so that we don't have that problematic kind of connectivity between licensing ordinance and use categories. And then the fourth.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I?
Yeah.
Add one point to the licensing point you made. The planning commission did discuss this, although it was very clear that if the county decides to adopt a licensing, not scheme, a licensing program, that it's not planning, it's not in the planning code and it's not really in the planning commission's purview. But we heard a lot of public comment and it became clear that the biggest issue with these 711 legal non-conforming STRs is the bad apples, which is a small fraction of them. Most of them coexist with their neighbors peacefully, but some of them don't. Some of them rent to 29 coming for a game day and they have cars all over the lawn and, and you know, lots of noise, lots of garbage, lots of nuisance. And so the idea behind the licensing scheme, assuming it proves to be legally permissible at all in the state of Georgia, is to provide the county with some ability to enforce, other than just trying to get the police to come at 11 o'clock at night on a Saturday. We're trying to get code enforcement to do something, right? If you have a licensing scheme and, and an operator gets a number of complaints, then the county can revoke their license and weed out from that 711 that, that, you know, 50 or 100 or how many may be that are causing the problems that result in all of these complaints. So that was, that was the idea behind that. But, and, and we heard a lot of support for that from members of the public that came to speak to us, although, as I said.
Complaints would have to be verified.
Sure.
You're right.
Of course, yeah, code enforcement, you know.
Right.
If there are complaints, code enforcement would investigate further and, of course, they'd have to verify them. But then if they were substantiated, then the license could be not renewed, just like an alcohol license. Licency can lose their license if there's a lot of underage sales or that sort of.
And Bruce's last slide here sort of speaks to these sorts of questions.
Yeah.
Just second, man.
So, I mean, to Matt's point, there was a lot of discussion with the planning commission on this and we've heard a lot of discussion at our front counter about this as well, when, when we've been talking with operators and neighbors alike. So enforcement of short-term rental regulations and those operational expectations, we, we leaned heavy on education first for six to eight months, and then, then we kind of slid into more of the, the enforcement side of it with warnings and beyond. But what we needed out of this was some clarity on the measurable things, the things that you can observe about a short-term rental that indicate a lack of compliance or, or give us something to lean on from an enforceability standpoint. Documentation is helpful. And as I mentioned before, if, if we have documentation that says it's this person and they're doing it this way and then it's observed to be different, we have a starting point that shows that inconsistency. And that helps our code enforcement staff tremendously to not have an ambiguous discussion, but to really zero in on what's going on. We also have some software that we have purchased that routinely combs the internet to find new listings. That's part of code enforcement's role now, that, that position that was funded to, to work with short-term rentals is doing periodic checks against that data. When that data is pushed, it's checked against the list of folks that are either legal non-conforming or they've got a permit. If they fall outside of those two categories, then we know we've got somebody that we have to contact about education and then following through. If you haven't gotten your stuff to operate, well, then we escalate it to the next step. And then the notion of a three-strikes rule for those operators, this definitely lives outside of zoning. We don't have anything in the zoning code that, that reaches into enforcement to this level. But it was talked about. It's represented here as a discussion point. And I think that's where we were looking, if there is a connection to those operating regulations that are more akin to licensing or more akin to those other types of things that can be withheld, like an alcohol license. Like if you have someone who's holder of an alcohol license who has infractions, that's a factor that can be taken into account when enforcement proceedings move forward. But I don't think there's anything in the ordinance, and I would defer to the attorney's office on this for sure, that it's a instant recipe of three strikes, you're done. It definitely is a process that goes through the judicial system and to make that determination. That's not administrative.
So I mean, it would be, I mean, I get that question. You go first, though.
I think I just had, I was going to respond to what Matt was saying earlier about, you know, the bad apples. And it kind of makes me think of my whole problem with special use permit approach to regulating these in general is that the special uses ride with the property forever. So you come in and hear a great story from a guy who wants to put this, you know, he wants to help support, you know, we had one a little while ago. He wants to help support, you know, families, daughter's going to go to medical school, all this stuff, great. You know, but you give a special use permit and that person can sell it the next day and it can be an Airbnb forever, for no matter who the owner is. So I really think that like, I, I kind of see this whole issue as needing to be kind of removed from planning, be more of a regulatory thing because we want to be looking at them, not is this property necessarily always the best, like, do we want it to be an Airbnb forever? But is the person who's applying, is that person going to run a good Airbnb? And there's no way, you know, kind of in the planning code for good reason to kind of regulate who these laws apply to. It's kind of more about the property itself. And I think we need to take a new approach completely to the STRs and kind of figure out a way to, to regulate the operators more than kind of determining individually properties, whether they're worthwhile. Because I think that gives us the ability to kind of adjust to the bad apples and, you know, take some actions where we couldn't if we were just given that was one thought.
Of course, obviously, you know, lots of regulations for activity lived outside of planning and zoning, health department regulations, alcohol, we've talked about it a fair lot. Melissa, Carol, Sarah?
Oh, I, I very much agree with Mike. I, I feel like this is a business regulatory issue more than a planning issue. Like, I do feel there needs to be certain physical criteria associated, but it, it's more activity that, that goes on. And, and as far as, and I know it's really hard in the judicial system to prove activity is going on. And I, I know some cities require signage. And I think that would be key because in order to, you know, prove something in the judicial system, you need evidence. So you need to encourage those who are witnessing the activity to collect the evidence, you know, take the pictures. So I really, and, and, you know, most people in the neighborhood might not even know that a certain property is functioning as an Airbnb and there might be regulations surrounding it. So I, I really think we need to consider some kind of like standard signage, a yard sign that has a QR code and a few bullet points of, you know, this is a STR, this is a phone number you call, here's a QR code telling you our ordinance and how you can help regulate this property.
Just as we're discussing this, I think the enforcement part is really important for me to look at. The alcohol licensing comes up as an example here, but you know, how, how do people lose their licenses? Is it from serving underage minors and how does that happen? And how do we catch people on that? Oftentimes, there are law enforcement and it uses sting operations and such to do that. I'm thinking about our single-family ordinance where it has to do with how many people are there and it's not enough to get the pictures of the cars. That's not, like, it's very, that seems like it's very hard to enforce, even to put the citation out there and then to have it stick. And with the, you know, with the, you know, Airbnb and others behind this, I, I just feel like this, I don't want us to produce a regulatory system that takes a lot of time to create, but is not very effective. And again, back to that question of can it be applied to all the ones that are already existing? That's an important criteria to know in here as well. But, but how are we going to operationalize this is really important. And getting the legal, I mean, we're spending a lot of time looking at right away rules and have the solicitor in there looking at the details of it and the fine details of the law with where people are standing and everything else. And I imagine that there's a whole lot legal details involved in this and in the enforcement of it. So I hope we get a clear picture of this as we move forward.
Yeah, so I, I really like the proposed changes that were put forward here. I can see the the mayor commission's discussion and the planning commission's discussion reflected in these proposals. And I just, I just had to say, I could not disagree more that this is not a planning issue at all. I think that the licensing is very important and that that is not a planning issue. But I just wanted to kind of throw out there, we, I mean, the, the mayor commission had a public commenter come up, a landlord come forward to them a few months ago and say, if you don't let me turn these units into an Airbnb, I'll have to reduce the rent. And reducing the rent is what we were going after. And this, this one-bedroom little in-town house that has a high turnover or whatnot, you know, that, oh, wouldn't that be perfect for an Airbnb? That describes my house, which is affordable. That describes the kind of housing that maybe isn't perfect, but you can get for cheaper. And these regulations, the one we have in place now, and even more so with the changes being proposed here, allow us to continue to regulate the use of our residential properties in such a way that prices are reduced. We do not have that price pressure from this very profitable use. And one particular thing that I really like from these proposals, I am glad to see doing away with the special use both from the perspective of how much time they take up to go through them, how much, how discretionary and therefore potentially unfair it can get when you're just having a random person come up and ask you, can I do it here? Do you like me? But I really like that it puts the RM zones on the same plane as the RS zones. Because that was an area that I noticed, as soon as it was put into place, I noticed a great deal of unfairness there. And to just, I mean, take it real briefly back to the future land use discussion and what Commissioner Thornton was saying. I had pulled up the future, the current future land use map when we were talking about what happened last time with, with East Athens. Just to like, see, like, the future land use there is the same as the future land use in five points, future land use in most of Normal Town or Boulevard. And then the devil being in the details was what zoning was different. And the East Athens got the RM zoning. These other neighborhoods got the RS zoning. And so having that different rule for RM neighborhoods versus RS neighborhoods was perpetuating that unfairness. And so I'm glad to see us moving towards correcting that in these changes. So, yeah. Licensing the bad apples, taking care of the bad apples, all very important, but I don't want us to lose sight of one of the initial drivers behind these regulations, and certainly what was most important to me and the people I listened to, which was the effect that these businesses have on housing affordability.
We get to Mike in just a second, but since the licensing mechanism has come up so much, have already contemplated where in the government that would live, and then kind of what the forward-facing timeline would be to get from where we are sitting here right now today to when we could have that framework in front of the mayor commission.
Yeah, I think the, I mean, for my part, and this may be one of the questions I'm asked the commissions when we get to the end, is it sounding like, because you could bring forward the zoning element of it, that would take the special use off the table, that would no longer be permitted. So one question is, do we proceed with that while the licensing mechanisms are worked out, or is it, do you prefer to say, we're going to package that together and bring it together? Because, so no, you're, you're thinking, booth, that's going to be a question, because we, I think we're ready to bring forward the changes in the zoning, or that would take care of a piece of this puzzle. And then quickly, having the, working with the attorney's office, crafting what is necessary to put the licensing in place.
I would say, though, you know, I think it's important that we find out if there is, if with just memo, because that's going to help answer my question about whether or not we need the sunset clause to continue.
And that was part of the reason I asked that question, because I could sense some hesitancy that, you know, if we moved forward under this current, there's no sunset, and part of the reason is because we anticipate dealing with it through licensing. If it turns out we cannot deal with it through licensing, then you may want to revisit the sunset piece, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to get rid of the sunset personally if there was no, like,
sort of replacing.
Other plan in place, you know, so I wouldn't see the need to change that aspect before coming up together.
I have a really basic, the, 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 right now, I mean, the home, the business ones are not allowed in single-family neighborhoods. The bad apples are in single-family neighborhoods. So, I mean, we're not getting rid of the use. So the only place is going forward in the new world, we'd be applying this license is to the ones in the commercial areas, right?
No, the intent would be that the licensing would apply.
Well, then it would be, wait, so that means we'd be opening them up for use in all neighborhoods with a license? Or just to the non?
Correct, because the land use is going to determine where these can actually be located. All of them would be arguably subject to the licensing.
Right, right, but are the ones that are in the, are we, right now, they're not allowed in the single-family?
Correct, they're nonconforming.
This is a discussion on the table, just to make sure we're all talking the same thing, that if we had this license, then they'd be okay in the single-family neighborhoods? Okay, and so they. Well, yeah, but that's, that's, I mean, I mean, let's be, the home occupation ones are not the problem. That's not what, what people are, so it's a sync, it's a business ones.
Under this scenario, though, they would be the ones that are nonconforming, that are in single-family areas and would be subject to the licensing are still there. They're not going.
Right, so they would, we'd have to be putting that in as a condition of their of their, of, no, their suns, I mean, the sun setting right now, you don't have to do anything different, but we'd have to be putting that in as a condition, like, if you, you know, you can keep running, but you'd have to get this license.
Right, we, of those 711 that are there, each of them would be, and depending on kind of the, each of them would be subjected to a licensing privilege. And so all of them would be regulated through some kind of licensing approach, but, but yes, they, there wouldn't be, if you didn't have a special use component, there wouldn't be any additional ones added to that inventory, except those that were in either the commercial, by the ones or the home occupation.
Right. Yeah, my, you know, my thinking on this a little bit is, you know, one way to approach it, if we did have a licensing, we could control the number of permits that were given, and you could perhaps create, you know, special districts, like, let's say, we decided that, you know, we don't want 700 of these nonconforming, but we want to allow, you know, like, let's create a five-points district, and we're going to allow 50 there. And right now, we've got 80. So once we give everybody who's already got one a permit to begin with, just to make them happy, so we don't get sued, and then we, as they kind of go out of business, we don't renew any permits, and we get that number down to 50 where we want it. And then we'd have a waiting list that, okay, as soon as we get to 49, number one on the list, you get to apply.
But that's a whole new use. That's a whole new, that's a whole new, like, that's changing the usage for a single family. So that's a whole other change as well, which we're not discussing at this point. I don't want to, I don't want to confuse what we're discussing.
Yeah, that's if you decide if we even want any houses anywhere to be SDRs.
Yeah, I, I think what you're saying would be like a next step. Like, right now, we're not even sure where this is living in the government. I don't disagree with you.
Yeah.
But, so what we're saying right now is we can remove the use from RMs with the proposed language. And the ones that are currently the 711, if we're able to work out a licensing program, they could then apply for a license. My, and, and I, I share the concern with like the enforcement of it, because I'd hate to like, I, but then again, I feel like we have no enforcement right now, so like, clearly, we need to work on that. So at least if there's something on the books, that's more enforcement. That's where I'm living right now.
Because I think like the maximum enforcement right now is only a thousand-dollar fine anyway.
And that's what state could have says you could do by ordinance.
Yeah.
I'm kind of curious about the idea behind commercial zones and RM zones. So one of the slides, one of the proposed ordinance changes is twofold, is that commercial SDRs would be allowed by right and all commercial zones and AR zones, and then would not be allowed in RM zones. I guess what I'm wondering about is, is, and maybe this is a question for planning staff, how did you come up? I'm thinking about commercial commercially zoned buildings that have lots of residential on them, which there are some, right? Like, commercial downtown, for example. Why would it be okay for a bunch of those to turn into, by right, turn into commercial SDRs? But not in like an apartment complex or an apartment building in an RM zone? I guess I don't understand the sort of different application of the principle. That feels inconsistent to me. And it, it feels a little bit like advantaging sort of larger developer, larger property owners, and disadvantaging smaller ones who might be able to benefit from that economic opportunity. I guess I'm just wondering how we got there.
It's largely a straight line between commercial zoning and commercial short-term rental. So two commercial things. Commercial short-term rental being essentially a single-unit hotel with a different hotel operator per floor. In all of the zones listed up there that have a C, a hotel is an allowable use, it's permitted. So sort of that, that straight line of if-then statements kind of led to that determination. The other thing is, where you look at our commercial zoning, downtown is a concentration of it, but the rest of it is kind of a rhythm coming out. And this is a use category, looking at it as a use. It doesn't seem inappropriate along these corridors. The other thing that we've identified, and we've had some conversations with folks about, is right now, our code requires ground-floor commercial uses. And that's something that our developers have sort of struggled with, because they tend to specialize in residential development, but they don't really know how to get tenants, commercial tenants. This is a commercial use that could function on the ground floor. And that may open the door for some of these commercial short-term rentals to locate in otherwise difficult to lease commercial properties and take the pressure off the neighborhoods.
Ground floor, the standard, Bruce.
Yes, you're saying, I guess I'm thinking of like the north downtown housing developments. That is, right, in overlay. So I'm assuming that the two levels of affordable units that will, once it's all built out, I think my, my memory is that it's kind of a one-third, one-third, one-third mixed-income unit or development. So would that mean that the market rate units in that development could all buy right the SDRs after the community just put gazillions of dollars into those housing units?
Unless there's something contractually with that lease that prohibits it.
Yeah.
The zoning would not prohibit it.
I think it's worth considering that there might be some special cases like that. Like, I think the, you know, when you think about how much public money has gone into a development like that, and even thinking about a application of the inclusionary housing, inclusionary zoning ordinance to allow for density bump, where the developer, developer could take their market rate units and buy right, turn them into CSTRs. I think it's just worth asking those questions. Those are two different scenarios, but I think worth asking when we have these. If we thought was okay, like, as a planning commission, for example, we see an application, somebody wants to build what we see as a bunch of housing units, but it's still CD. So they build a bunch of housing units, and we know they might be student housing, whatever, but then they become commercial, like, without limitation is what I'm reading here. But that would just be by right. Any of those units could be commercial SDRs. So we didn't say yes to a hotel. When we said, when we make the recommendation, the mayor commission, the mayor commission agrees. But that's not what we all said yes to, and that's sort of my concern, is I don't want to see a bunch of.
So I would say to your point, the clarity of the yes, it becomes very important. This needs to be something that's thought about. If there is a development that we're partnered with, that, that contractually, we express that as part of that development. For if it is a PD, then fine, let's make sure that this is part of our consideration from the use table of what we think's appropriate and not appropriate, especially if it's being marketed or the applicant is expressing that this is for, you know, affordability purposes, then I think that's absolutely a germane point that needs to be put together. But beyond that, I think because also the moment of saying yes to these things is when you write the ordinance.
Right.
And so if, you know, is this okay? Then we need to say out loud that this is okay.
Yeah, and, and you're right that a planning commission would, and mayor commission would have the opportunity to strike a use if it's a PD. But that would require sort of a person who's been on these commissions for a while, who remembers this option, like, there's always that sort of, yeah.
Ten years.
And that's where staff put you, well, just.
Can say, you can make us, say that one of your options is to either strike the use or to limit it to 10% of the units or something like that. But I just think we have to kind of think of some things like that. The allowing by right at commercial SDRs and single-family zones gives, or in that commercial zone, just gives me a little bit of pause for the reasons I just said.
And of course, that's the current situation, by right. It is, yes. Alex, Jennifer, Melissa, and then I know staff needs some feedback from us, so I want to give them that.
So, yeah, okay. Then quickly, I'm going to go back to the enforcement. If, can enforce it, absolutely enforce it, not just legally, but if it can't go in there and be stopped, I'm never going to vote for it. I, I, I haven't much up to this point. We already have the no more than two non-family members living in a place, and that's confusing from a realtor's point of view. And I've dealt with this. I've had people come to me. I thought that was enforceable. I bought into a neighborhood, now somebody is doing this next to me. I wouldn't have done it if I knew it wasn't enforceable. And so people are making major decisions based on enforceability. So that really got me. I hadn't even thought it that way, and someone told me that about a couple of weeks ago, so fairly recent. So if we can't enforce it, I will never vote anything forward like that, because it is just useless and complicated. Speaking of complicated, I was a, I'm sorry, I was getting your lunch. I did not care at all for the math problems, and I'm really good at math, and I'm very good at business math, and it just went, I went, oh, my gosh, we're just adding more to management, planning, and legal. And so I'm glad we're beating out of that area, because that's just complicated. Everything I'm doing on committees and commissions and things, municipal government is very complicated. And there's a lot that y'all have to deal with on the mayor and commission. There's a lot that staff has to deal with, and then committees like ours. It's amazing things get done, but it does get done. But the, the more we add and the more that gets added in there just to make a group happy, and not from us, but just, hey, this feels good. That's, that's going to come back and kick somebody later, and then we're going to be back at a table like this, trying to unwind it and wind it back. So I'm speaking in broad things, but I, I fear, and the reason I didn't vote for this at the very beginning, one of the reasons is I didn't feel we all knew what we were doing. I didn't know what we were doing. I, but, but I know the pressure that, that was put upon government to do something, but we're figuring it out. I appreciate everything Bruce is doing, and I, and I appreciate that staff has allowed us to have more conversations and together like this. This is a fantastic day where we're sitting around talking together, understanding each other. And then I'm just saying it only because I don't, I don't know if this will gain, I'm not a fan of a sign in front of a house that says this is a short-term rental. That goes along with privacy. I do not like this spyware thing that goes in to Airbnb and finds out. I do not like this spyware thing that goes in to Airbnb and finds out who's using it. That, that, I cannot stand that idea of the, the government going in. It's one thing if a neighbor complained and you looked into it and found out I was doing it. It's another thing to be just creeping around and finding out, oh, that's where this, this, this house is using Airbnb. You know, so again, that'll, that's never anything that settles me very well. Okay, I'm done.
I mean, obviously very complicated, Alex's point about privacy, Melissa's point about being able to identify the actors, Mike's point about being able to weed out the bad, bad actors, and Sarah's about the reason why we had questions about all of this in the first place. It was really depleting and hitting into our housing supply. I know the RM came up some from our conversations about some of the special use permits, people coming in apartment complexes where they had shared walls with people that could be having STRs, and that was a real concern. But I look at our office, the Three Tree Office, we've got Airbnb, I've got the office downstairs. That could never be a long-term rental up there. So I don't know how we get to a place where we quell the concerns, make it less complicated and come up with something. But I would say that if we are going to explore licenses, which I think are an excellent idea, we should put a cap on how many license any one particular applicant could have as far as how many commercial STRs they could operate.
I mean, I, I want to speak to the cap too. I, I feel that there should be a cap of, you know, within the neighborhood. They shouldn't, there shouldn't be one within a certain distance of another. And we talked about the problem, the problem is a bad actors. And those tend to be properties that can sleep lots of people who actually have parties. So the smaller properties are not as much of a problem. You know, the parks associated with larger ones too. The affordability is definitely an issue, and that's why I feel like, you know, removing the density of them. And I understand, you know, if you're living in a ten-building, you move, you shouldn't have to put up with a whole bunch of STRs. So I feel like a cap individual property percentage, you know, if you're operating any at all, there should be a cap on the number of bedrooms that can be operated as STRs.
Mike gets last word, and then I know staff needs some.
Make one comment. There is a state law that prohibits you having a registry of rental properties. And that came from, I just want to make everyone aware of that. That got lost in discussion.
We, we've discussed that time hardly a lot. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a different kind of rental, though. I mean, that, that registry is residential rental.
The argument the court's considering right.
Proposing that it live not, I don't know, I don't know what part of the law, the prohibition on rental registration lives in. But to me, a countywide rental registration program is different than a licensing plan, a way to license this use. It feels like there is a way to do it legally and above board that is more like a liquor license or something like that.
Like a hotel, you have to put your name down as a hotel.
And they pay hotel taxes.
So Bob, what do you need from the body?
Well, you've given, I think, the direction in terms of where this fits in. And I, and I want to kind of, we're peeking back to make sure I've got kind of things correctly. So it sounds like ideally we would proceed with the zoning changes only after we have actually made the determination, at least through the memo that, that Judd's going to provide related to the ability to actually have the licensing approach and what that licensing approach may or may not be able to cover. And maybe even preferably not taking the zoning forward until we have the actual licensing plan. That seemed, at least that piece.
Track with everybody.
And, and understanding that this is kind of a, kind of viewed maybe as a first step. Think of it as this step is the step that actually kind of closes the door on the special use provisions being available and begins to try to regulate the bad actors. And it probably is not the end-all. I mean, there's probably going to be, probably in some cases, more steps to come in to make them more permissive in some areas may make sense and probably make them more restrictive in other areas. I, I hadn't really, the idea of kind of some of the downtown zoning piece is interesting to try to figure out, how do you manage that? I mean, I would say that if a CD-zoned property, go back to one of Bruce's comments, a CD-zoned property permits, yes, it may, they may have come in, they've got this CD zoning because they presented a collection of apartment units, but they could turn that into a hotel, the zoning would permit a, a hotel with it. So it's a little bit trickier, but, so I think that piece probably is a phase two of that. So starting with this step of let's lock up the zoning, let's go ahead and get the licensing to the extent that's practical. And I understand, based on what Judd's memo says, may cause us to have to come back and have more conversation. Because if it says you can't apply the licensing or don't think we can across the full spectrum, then we may have to revisit the idea of sunset and that type of thing. But so, and, and I obviously know, of course, that faster the better. I mean, that's been kind of the mantra for this for a while, is trying to get this thing actually across the finish lines. But that's, that's what I'm hearing.
And how it would be enforced?
And I want to touch the enforcement a little bit, because I, I think that, I mean, to be fair, you all know this from, from code enforcement on the number of unrelated individuals. And it's core, it's not going to be any easier to enforce this than it is that, except for one thing, which is you don't have a license when it comes to unrelated individuals. So you do have something, assuming, depending on what comes of this memo, if the, if the properties can all be licensed and enforcement's not going to be any easier to prune, but if you do prove it, you have something you can actually potentially take away that you don't have on the number of unrelated individual residences. So that is one difference, but I don't want to, I don't want to pretend that it's going to be easy to prove the case to be able to actually get. But I think you do have something is at least tangible more so than the unrelated.
So am I hearing you correctly that the, that the special, the change to the special use zoning would not come about until we have something drafted for licensing?
That's what it sounds like from the, from the mayor commission is what I'm hearing. And the reason being is because if it turned out it was something short of being able to apply the licensing across the whole and an ability to take something away from the bad actors, you might want to revisit the sunset clause if that became reality. That's, that's my understanding, to kind of couple them together.
But those are two separate things. So the special use consideration and the sunset are.
The Sixth Amendment and just got rid of the special use opportunity. As a standalone thing later on.
And that would also stop the bleeding on the, that like dozens of applications for special use.
Yeah, I see your point. I mean, that's a question, I guess, you could, we could move forward with the zoning piece that only deals with the special use. And then still come back and say, okay, we'll take the next step with the licensing.
Probably be able to move forward with the zone.
We can do that, I mean, that, that makes sense.
Now, is to give us, just to give you more time to work on the licensing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then at least eliminate that set of hours of our lives that we give up to these.
Like a moratorium on special use applications for like a certain period of time?
If we're going to get rid of it, let's just get rid of it. Not that you stood in a.
Yeah, I think we get it in front of the mayor and commissioner faster than we could do anything with that piece. Because that piece, yeah, thank you for kind of separating those two. Because we can do that and not affect the question that you had relative to licensing and being applicable across the country.
All right. Everybody as close to at peace as you can be. May our journey.